This is a special meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on August 21, 2019. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Sally Derrick and the Pledge of the Texas Flag led by John Matthews.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one and indivisible.
As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for each student. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions of which you will get to see in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the open meetings law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, the board members present are Tara Herbachek, John Matthews, Sally Derrick, Nancy Klein, Randy Shackman, Guerma Ramos, and Candace Valenzuela. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to point out that we have an agenda item during which the board encourages comments from the citizens of the district and from district employees. That agenda item is number four, consider a public meeting to discuss 2019-2020 budget and proposed tax rate. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so during agenda item number four. Please submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table just outside the boardroom door. You may place the completed form in the box provided on that same table, or you may present your completed form or give your name to administrative assistant Kim Castanon. She's over here now. When the board addresses the agenda item and following the presentation by administration, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board. Our next agenda item is number two, consider approval of 2018-2019 final budget amendment for the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. Dr. Chapman?
Yes, this time, Mr. Rodrick will explain the budget amendments to the board.
Thank you. We have provided the detail of the budget amendment in your booklet behind tab two. Each year in August, we look at each functional category and determine if we need to add funds to provide reserves that will cover any unforeseen entries or accruals that may occur after year end. This helps us to avoid potential compliance issue with our external auditors if we were to exceed expenditures over appropriations in functional category. Each functional categories that are affected in the general fund budget amendment are due to a larger-than-normal payroll accrual due to the earlier start of teachers and campus staff. The difference in the school start dates has shifted the payroll accruals between fiscal years. To better illustrate, the CFP fiscal year starts on September 1st. A teacher on 187-day contract worked 15 days in August of 2018 for their 18-19 assignment. And now, fast forward to the same teacher will work 18 days in August of 19 for their 19-20 assignment. That means that there will be three more days in 18-19. This will increase our 2018 expenditures due to the extra days worked in August. In addition, the district is proposing a $6.5 million operating transfer out of the general fund to establish a locally-defined special revenue fund to support the long-term athletic capital improvement plan. Our current estimates of the final year-end results indicate that we have positive variances to support this transfer. We ask the board to consider approval of the final 2018-19 budget amendment as presented.
Board members, are there any questions or any action? We are looking for a motion.
Ms. Klein, I recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the 2018-2019 final budget amendment report as presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Herbachek. Do I have a second? Ms. Valenzuela, thank you. Is there any discussion? So, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rodrick. So, our next agenda item is number three, consider adopting a resolution to classify a portion of fund balances per the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Standard 54, GASB 54. Dr. Chapman?
Yes, Mr. Rodrick will also discuss this with you.
The Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, adopted in 2010 Statement 54. Part of our yearly financial reporting practices include evaluating our fund balance categories and determining if we want to identify any commitments of our unassigned fund balance. The 2018-19 fiscal year will be the ninth year of our implementation of the GASB 54. Committed categories require board authorization. We're proposing five categories, building, construction, repair, and maintenance, technology, capital replacement, transportation upgrades, safety and security, and campus activity funds. The board authorizes the categories through a resolution, and the management determines an amount at year end. We have included an estimate of the proposed commitment amounts. Before any funds could be actually spent in these categories, it would require board approval through a budget amendment, with the exception of campus activity funds, which are in a special revenue fund. We ask the board to consider the approval of the resolution establishing the categories to commit a portion of the district's unassigned fund balance in compliance with GASB 54.
So, board members, we have a resolution presented by Mr. Broderick. Is there a motion to be made at this time? Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Klein, I would move that we adopt the resolution as presented that will classify a portion of the fund balance per GASB 54.
We have a motion by Mr. Shackman. Do we have a second? A second by Ms. Derrick. Is there any discussion? So, with no discussion, anybody has any? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Our next agenda item is number four, consider a public meeting to discuss 2019-2020 budget and proposed tax rate. As established in Texas Education Code Sections 44.002 through 44.006, the process to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for Texas public school districts includes a lawfully posted public meeting during which our constituents may participate. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may, during administration's presentation, submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table just outside the boardroom door. You may place the completed form in the box provided on that same table, or give your name or completed form to administrative assistant Kim Castanon. Following the presentation, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the board according to the forms and names received. Comments should pertain to the 2019-2020 budget and proposed tax rate and be no longer than three minutes. Our timekeeper, Guerma Ramos, will alert you at the end of your three minutes, as the end of your three minutes approaches. Dr. Chapman, I understand that you and Mr. Rodrick would like to begin with some words in a short presentation before we open the floor to comments from our audience.
Yes, ma'am. So, finance has done an incredible job of putting together the 19-20 budget. And with, I'm going to consider House Bill III and the language that is going back and forth with the district, they've been on top of it, and they have a sound budget that I'd like to present to you today. And so, Mr. Rodrick's going to start the conversation with a PowerPoint, which you also have in item number five.
Thank you. The district is required to legally adopt three budgets, the general fund, the debt service, and the student nutrition fund. The first one is the general fund.
Hold on just a second, and I apologize. I said item five. If you look in your packet, it's under presentations, so budget presentation, my apologies. And you can see it up on the screen, and it's also in your book. I apologize.
First, we want to look at our 2019 general fund additions. Under program enhancements, we added full-day pre-K at Carrollton and McLaughlin-Strickland. We've also added a counseling center. We've set aside funds for after-hour counseling. We also did the expansion of the average tutor program, and also, we started Code to the Future at two campuses, at Davis and Lavaita. Other additions that are major to the general fund are the compensation increase that was passed at the last board meeting under the requirement of House Bill III. Also, we set aside funds for our safety and security, career and technology computer upgrades at a few campuses. We also set aside funds for the bus camera system upgrades. And last time, we talked about our increase in our property and casualty insurance, and we've set aside funds to account for that premium increase as well. As we talked last time about our spending requirements for House Bill III, under early education, this is a new allotment that was established under House Bill III, and that was helped, this is supposed to help pay for full-day pre-K. We set aside $2.9 million for this allotment. Compensatory education increased the weights for educationally disadvantaged students under House Bill III, and we've set aside $2.4 additional dollars to help meet those spending requirements as well. The bilingual education allotment had their weights adjusted a little bit, and so there, we set aside $1.3 million to help achieve spending requirements for the bilingual education allotment. Career and tech expanded to seventh and eighth grade, and we set aside an additional $500,000 for that allotment. And a new allotment is dyslexia allotment for under House Bill III. That's about $413,000. Also, under House Bill III, high school allotment was eliminated, as well as the GT allotment. Even though those allotments were eliminated, no program changes were made. Even though the GT allotment is going away, we're still going to be required to report to the TEA on how we spend those funds on that program.
And there's been a number of parents that have asked, you know, we've learned that House Bill III eliminated GT, for an example, and what is the district doing? And your answer can be, we are staying the course as what we have in previous years. Just know that.
The 19-20 budget has some large contingencies included in it. With the new information from House Bill III that comes available each week, we've set aside funds for the unexpected. Within the 19-20 budget, we've set aside funds for furniture upgrades of $1 million. We've also set aside $500,000 for exterior improvements, as well as, we've added $2 million to the technology from the previous year for a total of $3 million for the technology initiatives. We've also included a budget item for the operating transfer out for improvements to the athletic competition fields. And the other use item is an operating transfer out of the creation of a wind and hail fund. Our insurance consultant has recommended that to help curb the rising cost of insurance premiums, we should consider a wind and hail fund. They said that once we accumulate enough funds in this fund, you could layer our insurance to help eliminate or reduce our premiums drastically. With the, prior to House Bill III, there was a lag in our state funding calculation. So, if we were calculating our 19-20 state revenue, we would use property values from the prior year, and so, we would use our tax year 2018 values. With the first rating, this has become a requirement to explain the lag in our state funding. TEA has requested this to be removed, but in case it doesn't get removed, we want to make sure we're in compliance with this first rating requirement. And so, now with House Bill III, there's no longer a lag when we're calculating our 19-20 state funding. And so, based on estimates, we use our 19-20 values. The problem is, our comptroller doesn't release those preliminary values until around January 2020. So, today, we're in August of 19, and so, we've had to estimate what we consider our T2 values, and so, we're, so we've made our best guess at what these values will be. And so, that's the dilemma that House Bill III has created. For 18-19, we adopted a $3.5 million deficit. For 19-20, we're proposing total revenues at $295.5 million for an increase of a little over 5.1 from the prior year. You can see our tax revenue is estimated to go down about $1.8 million. This is due to the compression of our tax rate under House Bill III. And the largest increase is their state revenue. This is because the offset of House Bill III, the state contributing more dollars to the district. For our total expenditures, we're estimating it being $286.5 million, which is about a $7.4 million decrease from the prior year. The majority of the large increases are due to the payroll, which is our compensation adjustment that we approved at the last board meeting. And the supplies, that's the 13.3. This is where our contingencies are that we just previously discussed, as a compensatory education, bilingual. These are where these are temporarily housed until we have a plan on how we're going to spend those dollars. And then, the last thing is our TIF, two of our large TIFs expired on December 31, 2018. And so, you'll see, we went from $33.1 million to just $1.2 million from 1920. And that's the Farmers Branch number two TIF. We'll make one last payment in April of 2020. And then, the other uses is the $9 million. That's the budgeted $8 million for the athletic competition fields, and the $1 million for the wind and hail. And so, for 1920, we're proposing a balanced budget.
Just as a reminder too, when you're looking at these numbers, with the recapture payment, our numbers don't look similar to other districts where you see a large reduction in recapture, and that's because of the component of our TIF ending at the same time that we had to move to current values. There's this $2 billion swing in the valuations, and so, it skips kind of that lag period. And so, you don't see that reduction like you would have seen in other districts when you're looking at your recapture because of those two elements happening at the same time for CFP. That's also the area that, as I mentioned last time, we're still trying to get clarification and confirmation from TEA that the template we're using is calculating that accurately. So, that's also something we'll be following up with you as soon as we get that clarity from TEA.
And the next fund is the debt service fund. You know that our appraised values increased about 9.2%. We still have unissued authorization of our, from our November 2018 bond election of 234 million. Included in a line item in our debt service fund is $2.4 million for early retirement of principal. This allows us to, for a constant interest in sinking tax rate of 20 cents. This also provides stability in future years if appraised values decrease. For 18-19, we approved, the board approved a balanced budget. For 19-20, we're proposing our total revenues of $45.8 million, which is a $3.5 million increase from the previous year. The majority of that increase is from our tax revenue, which is an increase in our property values. And on the expenditure side, we're proposing a $45.8 million for expenditures, which is a balanced budget. The majority of the increase is coming from our interest payments. The next fund is our student nutrition fund. For 18-19, we adopted a balanced budget. For 19-20, we're proposing total revenue of $13.3 million, which is about a $500,000 increase from the prior year. We're estimating a slight increase in our food service activity and a slight increase in our federal revenue. On the expenditure side, we're estimating or projecting a $14.5 million, $14.5 million, and we're expecting to adopt a $1.2 million deficit. The increases are due to, on the payroll side, is for the, most of the SNS workers. The district provided some pay grade changes, as well as the board appraise raise. This results in an increase in that payroll area. And on the supply side, the student nutrition department included some upgrades for monitors for the electric menu boards, an upgrade to computer equipment and software, as well as some additional funds for food costs. And on the large other variance is in the capital outlay. The student nutrition department hopes to replace four to five serving lines, and so, that's what's contributing to the large capital outlay of $1 million for 1920. And also, the Texas Department, we've talked about this multiple times in the past, the Texas Department of Agriculture only allows three months of fund balance, and so, the food service department, you know, has, you know, put a plan in place to help get us in compliance with those rules. And so, this will help if we realize that $1.2 million, this is a planned thing that helps us get in compliance with the rules. As we look at our proposed tax rate, for 18-19, the MNO rate was $1.17, and under House Bill III, for 19-20, we're going to be compressed to a 1.06835, which is a little over 10 cents decrease. For RNS, we're proposing 20 cents with no change. And so, for 18-19, we've got a total tax rate of $1.37, and for 19-20, we're proposing This is the history of the CFP tax rate. You can see in '05-'06, we were a total tax rate of $1.8259 before we, there were two required years of tax compression from the state. And our tax rate has kind of slowly declined from then until 2016-17, when we had our TRE. And then, in 1920, with House Bill III, we're going to be compressed down to 126835. And then, based on projections that we've seen, we'll see probably more compression in the following years as well. This is just an illustration of local, 2018-19 local tax rates. So, you can see HEB was the lowest in the area, followed by Denton, then CFP. And then, you can see on the other end of the spectrum, the Prosper, which was at $1.17 and $1.50 for total tax rate. This is a comparison of the proposed levy of last year's levy on average residence. Last year's residence was $224,000 with a tax rate of $1.37. An average homeowner would pay $3,070 and $3,070 and $79 cents. This year, that average home went, increased to $240,000. The tax rate, 1.26835, homeowner would pay about $3,054.20, which is an estimated decrease The tax rate, there's, for 19, for tax year 2019, there's no additional specific language that's required for the tax rate adoption, and this will be the motion language that Ms. Tillman will cover in a couple of agenda items. And just our summary of our objectives tonight, we want to hold a public meeting. We're proposing to adopt the 2019-20 budget for the required funds, our general fund, our debt service fund, or our food service fund, I mean, debt service and food service fund. Also, adopt the proposed tax rate of $1.6835 for maintenance and operations, and 20 cents for interest and sinking fund. So, we want to thank you for your interest in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and board comments.
At this time, the board will entertain questions and comments regarding the proposed budget and tax rate from the floor. As explained before the presentation, interested individuals who have submitted requests to speak forums will be called to the podium. Mrs. Castanon, have you received any forums or names indicating interested speakers?
None.
So, with no speakers that have signed up, are there any other members of the audience who would like to speak to the board about the proposed budget and tax rate for 2019-2020? Hearing none and seeing none, we will proceed to our next agenda item, number five, consider all matters related to the 2019-2020 budget, including execution of a, that sounds harsh there, Tanya, execution of a resolution adopting and approving said budget. Dr. Chapman?
Yes, ma'am. This time, Ms. Tillman will make the presentation.
Thank you. The district has met all legal requirements as prescribed by Texas Education Code. We have a resolution prepared that is behind item number five that I would like to read at this time. Whereas due notice, as required by law, has been given of a public meeting on the 2019-20 budget for this school district, and whereas said public meeting was held according to law, and whereas the administration and the Board of Trustees have carefully considered the budget for the said 2019-20 school year, and find this budget to be in the best interest of the school district, whereas therefore be it resolved, ordered, and ordained by the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, that the 2019-20 budget of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District shall be and the same is hereby in all things adopted and approved as the budget of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District for the 2019-20 fiscal year in the total amount of revenue of $354,729,896, and expenditures and other uses of $355,999,274, of which $2,475,444 has been included in the interest and sinking fund debt service for early retirement of debt principal. We ask the board consider adoption of the resolution.
Does anyone have a motion regarding adoption of the 2019-2020 budget? Ms. Valenzuela?
I move to approve the resolution to set the tax rate for tax year 2019 as found in item six of the board book. So, sorry.
Yeah, number five.
So, it's this resolution. So, really, just the agenda item comment.
So, I move that we execute the resolution adopting the 2019-2020 budget.
I have a motion for Ms. Valenzuela. Do I have a second? Mr. Matthews, thank you. All those in, well, is there any discussion? Mr. Shackman?
Mr. Rodrick, just a question. I understand why we're putting the $24 million into the supplies and giving us some flexibility there. Those specific items, furniture and those pieces that we are putting contingencies for, are there required amounts from HB3 that are in that?
No.
Or these are just?
No, those are just kind of initiatives that, you know, we felt that are important going into 1920.
So, it's a target and likely will not be affected adversely with new information from HB3?
Yes, that's our hope.
And thank you, for me personally, I think for all the board, y'all have had to work unbelievably hard this year. I love it. Some of this stuff isn't going to be approved until into 2020, and you've had to give us a good, solid budget proposal that we have to approve by law tonight. Intelligent, isn't it? But thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Herbachek?
So, on the, on the presentation, on the general fund page and the proposed 2019-2020 budget, on the line item of other operating expenditures, that, that increase, I mean, I have a hard time tying back some of these other details. Can you review what some of those, what impacted, what, I think that's about a 15% increase over 2018-2019?
On the other operating?
Yeah, other operating?
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
That one came from our insurance premium.
Is that what?
That's largely that item, yes.
About $400,000 of that, $600,000 is the insurance premium.
And that's, I mean, based on some of the information we got on the wind and just general insurance, that, we could, we could expect that to increase every year, just like our own personal insurance, right, our premiums?
Yes.
So, it seems like, you know, some of those increase, I guess we're seeing a benefit with the reduction in the TIF benefit, I mean, the TIF payment. So, I guess, planning for future years, how are we going to prevent getting caught with those expenditures?
So, that's why we have a big portion of this budget earmarked for capital improvements, so that we don't get in a situation where we've established recurring costs to the extent of our current available resources with our temporary funding coming from the transition funding. And that's what Dr. Chapman and I have been discussing about, you know, keep ourselves aligned so that we can adjust, and that's why, you know, we've always advocated for a higher fund balance than a minimum amount.
Right.
So that we are able to adjust and have that flexibility to have time to react to whatever the legislator decides to do. You know, we feel confident that that system will be fixed, but that, it's an opportunity for us to invest, make some capital investments that were not included in the bond plan. And it also is one-time funding, so it gives us the flexibility as we move towards the next legislative session that we don't have all of this locked up in recurring costs.
And I guess, protection, I think my fear is that as we go on and some of those things are finalized and some of these things go away, that we get caught, that we don't get caught with not enough money to continue the GT.
Correct.
Any other programs that we have.
Yes. With the new funding system, though, there are opportunities to better maximize state resources, and so, those will be some of the program decisions, you know, that we'll be looking at in the future so that we are offering programs that now are weighted or that there's allotments tied to. So, we do have opportunities to potentially bring in more resources that we may not have had in the past as we look at what we're doing programmatically. So, that's a positive with the. So that's a positive with the new system. So those are things we're looking at and then we also will always continue to look for ways to maintain and increase our enrollment to generate those revenues.
Okay, thanks. And I echo Mr. Shackman's statement. Thanks for your advice.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. Our next agenda item is number six, consider all matters related to the proposed tax rate for the tax year 2019, including a resolution setting said tax rate. Dr. Chapman?
Yes, Ms. Tillman will take this agenda item.
Thank you. The district has met all legal requirements related to truth and taxation requirements, public hearings, postings in the paper. So we are ready this evening to propose a tax rate for adoption. And we do this through a resolution and we do read the resolution for the record. On this, the 21st day of August 2019, the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District convene in regular session at the regular meeting place of said board in said district with the following members present and in attendance. Nancy S. Klein, President; Guillermo William Ramos, Vice President; Tara Hrbachek, Secretary; Candace Valenzuela, Assistant Secretary; Sally Derrick, Member; John Matthews, Member; Randy Shackman, Member. No one was absent, constituting a quorum. And among other proceedings held by said Board of Trustees were the following. There came to be considered the matter of establishing and setting the tax rate to be levied on all taxable property of record on the 2019 tax rolls. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District has heretofore approved and adopted the 2019-20 budget for the district, on this date, we, the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, hereby levy or set the tax rate on a $100 valuation for the district for the tax year 2019 at a total tax rate of 1.26835 to be assessed and collected by the duly specified assessor and collector as follow. 1.06835 for the purpose of maintenance and operations and 20 cents for the purpose of payment of principal and interest on debts. Such taxes are to be assessed and collected by the tax officials designated by the district. We do have specific motion language for this agenda item. It's the last tab in your binder. We ask the board consider adoption of the resolution to set the tax rate.
Board members, do we have a motion? Mr. Shackman?
Just because everybody loves paying taxes. I move to approve the resolution to set the tax rate for tax year 2019 as found in item six of the board book, setting the tax rate at $1.06835 for the purpose of maintenance and operation and $0.20 for the purpose of payment of principal and interest on debts.
We have a motion by Mr. Shackman. Do we have a second? Mr. Bocic? Thank you. Is there any discussion? So with no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. The board will now move on to agenda item number seven, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, do any of you have comments you wish to make at this time? Well, seeing none, hearing none. I guess, ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at, look at my, 6:35 PM. Thank you staff for all your hard work to get this all put together, as Mr. Shackman said, in such short order for us so we could do this tonight. And thank you board for being willing to meet Wednesday night so I can fly to my son's wedding this weekend. So I appreciate it.